Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This is Wasika School Board's regular meeting for Thursday, April 18th, 2024. It's 5:30 PM. And we are in Central Building, second floor conference room. And first thing we'll do is pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors. You want to talk? Want to say anything? No? Okay. She's working on a couple badges, right? For scouts? All right. Glad you're here. And your mom. Okay. Other than that, we'll move on to payment of claims. Sarita?
I reviewed the claim for the month of March, and I recommend an action of payment for those claims. Account payable $1,323,895.23. March dental, $12,177.70. And payroll, $856,612.68.
A second. Okay. Motion and a second to approve payment of claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Information items, Dr. Hertzberg.
Thank you. And I think if it's okay with the board tonight, we're gonna have Mr. Mullin do the financial report first. The rain this week has rescheduled a soccer game that he needs to get to, and so we'll have him do his financial report first, and then we'll move into Dr. Miller's report after that, so.
Perfect. Yes, thanks for being flexible. Second grade soccer is very thrilling, but they do need a coach, so. Obviously, the items that we normally have in the board for you to review, just a couple things to point out. We did, I believe it's due to migrants, but I don't exactly have the full data, but we did get a little spike back. So where we had a dip last month, now we're up about 10 kids. So we'll keep monitoring that. And obviously, what matters is the average in the year. So as things go, we'll just keep on. But you know, as far as the enrollment total, we're kind of in the range where we were hoping to be, and nothing's changed there. Expenses, the only thing I'd point out is now that we've approved the revised budget, that is what I'm using now as the year-to-date comparison. Looking at it, though, we're still within about 1% of our spending from last year. You know, nothing sticking out as any alarm bells or anything. It's kind of like the term to say. So unless anyone has any questions on those items. Perfect. Other than that, just would like to point out a few things that are going on in the business office. Obviously, we have a new face, so I'd like to officially welcome Amy aboard. And this is the time of year where we're kind of in two years. So now fiscal year '24 still has about a quarter left, but we're looking at '25. So I'm starting all those budget talks, looking at preliminary revenue, and we'll be meeting with business manager, or budget managers soon, as far as those. And then also getting ready for annual verification, because that's everyone's favorite, I know, as a parent, to go fill out all those forms. But trying to get that process ready. But other than that, yeah. Hopefully, a kind of a quiet time of year as we prepare for the calendar change into July. Any other questions? Perfect, thank you.
Good. Then we can move into the junior, senior high report as we get to our last building of the year for building reports. Welcome, Dr. Miller, here to be principal of our junior, senior high school, to share what's happening at the junior, senior high with regard to our strategic plan and all the work they're doing.
All right, so evidently, the best for last, which...
I was just gonna say, I don't know if people are realizing it, but we have four people that all have their doctor's degree sitting on that side of the room.
Well, that was by design, I think. Well, thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on at the junior, senior high school from this year. Dr. McGuire is here with me. She has been, she's my partner in lots of things, so she's helped to put this together. So the first slide, just kind of takes a look at, I kept last year's slide on there as well, or information, just our enrollment, which you just talked about. And that's what Mr. Mullin and I were just comparing. The only difference is that I have 159 11th graders, and he has 160 on the thing. So otherwise, we're right on, which is great. You know, started June at the last day of school, last school year, we ended, we were at 838 students enrolled, seven through 12. We went with October 1st date, which is what is used like on the MD websites for tracking all kinds of student data. And at that point, we were at 845. So we are up some, and we see a uptick at the beginning of the year normally. At this point, we are at 821 total students, and normal fluctuations between people moving, transferring to the ALC, lots of different things. So nothing out of the ordinary there. The next slide, it just kind of recaps our staffing at our building. The administration team includes myself, Justin Johnston, Dean of Students Jake Nelson, Activities Director, and I might have included, I think I include our SRO in that number as well. So otherwise, that's been, it's not much different than last year. The next slide reviews the student demographics by ethnicity, and that is based on enrollment on October 1st. Will that be 2024? 23? Nope. Again, like Matt was saying, he works between two different years. That's kind of where I am too, so my brains fly. Fry and load it there. So again, fairly typical for where Wasika has been since I've been here and what we have seen over the years. The next slide, kind of, we're starting to jump into our vision card a little bit. Our vision card of the junior, senior high school is focused on assessment for learning, which that encompasses a lot more than just testing. That is kind of a way of learning where we're using assessment practices, which include formative assessment, which is the work that students do on a daily basis and get feedback, as well as those summative type things. But they're all designed to measure and influence learning. We've worked a lot with standards alignment.
It's just a WASP.
Yeah.
Got it.
That WASP was here on Monday.
That's why I wear a hat.
Yeah. There you go.
There was two in here yesterday.
Interesting. So standards alignment is a big piece of that. And right now, we're in the midst, the state has introduced, and we're working at transitioning. Science standards are the most up, like the closest in what we're working on. And then social studies and language arts. So there's lots with that. We've been working really hard to put together curriculum maps so that that basically lays out just the basics. It's not everything that's within the curriculum for each course, but each course will have a map that will guide kind of where the standards, what's covered, how students are assessed, and that's a big task. And then formative assessment is kind of that piece that we've got, we talk about and we work with, but we'll really get into that a lot more once we have, you know, curriculum aligned and having conversations around how to best show, how students can best show they know what they're supposed to know and be able to do. The next slide starts getting into some of the data that is what we're using at the district level for our, the school, the district vision card. And so one of the questions that's important for us to know is, I think my school is a safe place to be. And we leave that, it's kind of broad, because it can think, okay, physical safety, I mean, that's kind of, that is obviously a very huge thing on the forefront. It's in media, all those things. But it's also just, I feel safe just being there for a variety of different reasons. And so 54.5% of students selected a four or a five. That three number is kind of a neutral number, but we just wanted to look at the ones that just identified four or five. So digging into that, finding, trying to get more information as to what, why they don't feel safe or, you know, do feel safe, is something that we definitely can do. Now, that number is from last May, because we'll do it again, we do it annually. So this coming May, we'll do this survey again. And it has other questions as well, but we'll see kind of where things are with that. Attendance rates, we're pretty solid in attendance rates. That gives each grade level individually, but then it breaks down, gives you the total percentage. And the federal guidelines when working with truancy and stuff, that 10% mark, if a student loses or misses 10% or more, they're considered chronically absent. And so only eight, less than 8% of our students are in that range. And so that's, honestly, that's pretty good. It may not seem like it, but it's decent. Graduation, so anticipated graduation rate. So based on credits completed, and we were able to kind of see, okay. So it says, students that are on track to graduate, we have 548 students in grades nine through 12, includes 12th graders, out of a total of 568 students, so 96.5%. And that's really, really good. That makes me very happy. A few years ago, going through the pandemic, I mean, there were a lot of kids that just, it was not that high. So getting back to a point where we're in a good spot with that feels good.
I have a question on that. So those 20 students that you have there, that's seventh through 12?
Ninth through 12.
Ninth through 12.
So it's just when they're earning the credits they need for graduation.
And do you feel like that's more heavily weighted towards one grade or another? Is that pretty evenly amongst all grades?
That's a good question. I haven't seen like the individual grade levels. I would guess that it could fluctuate because different grade levels, different grades have different, I call them personalities. You know, some, some are like go-getters as a general group, and some are a little less. And so just, that's a great question. I don't know that answer.
I think it does get higher as you get into the higher grades because there's less time for them to make up those credits.
Absolutely.
They can anticipate as a ninth grader, even if they're a little bit behind, they can still do, make credit recovery, some are supposed to make up those credits as they get older, that time runs out.
And sometimes, ninth graders, it takes them a while to figure out like, oh, this is what they meant by these count or these add towards graduation. So that's a good point. Thank you. So this directly relates to the next slide, which is our graduation, graduation rate. So we're moving in the right direction. Obviously, 2020 was a dip, and last year was kind of a dip, but we're in a good spot. The goal, our goal is 90%. And so from last year to this year, we met the goal. So that's, that's really great. The next slide, one of our measures, or one of the things that we talked about, or part of the vision card is reading at grade level. And so now that Dr. McGuire take...
Yep, and on the vision card, it's reading on grade level up through eighth grade, but we give that NWA through ninth grade, so that data is included here. So this is the breakdown of junior high on the left and senior high on the right. So the left side showing percentile, so what the percentage of students that our students performed at or better than. And so using that 41st percentile is kind of a cutoff on the left-hand side. Seventh and eighth grade students, we had 63.6% of those students above the 40th percentile. So doing at or better than 40% of students nationally who take this assessment. On the right side, our ninth graders were at 69.4% at or above the 40th percentile there. So on the next slide, it will break this down by each of those grade levels. So another way to show that, but also this is by RIT, which is just that measurement scale that the NWA's use. And so that top number, there's a lot of numbers here, but 136 students took that test, and 77 of those students were at or above the grade level average. And so that's that 56.6% were at or above the average in seventh grade. The next one shows eighth grade, so 46.1% were at or above that average of all the students tested in our district. And then ninth grade, 55.7% at or above the average.
So we do the NWA fall, and then we do it, we'll do it again this spring. Right now, that we're in the middle of MCA testing with seventh, eighth grade, 10th, and 11th grade. So I believe, you know, in May, we'll do NWA again. So we'll see kind of how, how that plays out. So the last slide is just some things to highlight. Blue J Connect is something that we have been, it's been there, it's basically a homeroom. It's been part of the system from, since before I've been there. And the last several years, we have adapted and we developed it. Runs every day for 20 minutes. It's basically, classes are a little smaller, the focus on community building, social, emotional learning. Curriculum is something that I'm pretty proud of. We've had a staff, a team, that has worked and developed this curriculum, especially the last two years. That is sequenced where we're doing a lot of the same things, but like if we're focusing on kindness, let's say, for a lesson, each grade level has a lesson that's centered on that, but it's different. It has different, you know, based on their grade level so that we're able to kind of cycle through and not reinvent the wheel every time. So we also have focus days, which are similar to, some of you have elementary students that went through here, win time, what I need. And so it's opportunities for kids to connect with teachers to make up work, or if they need to learn something and get re-taught something, lots of options there. Beauty and the Beast ran with a great success, and I think I highlighted that as we were able to bring all of the elementary students in. So every, all the students K through eight actually saw a preview of it. So that's Team, that's Sacred Heart, that's all the elementary schools. So we packed the pack, that's for sure. So that was great. Spring sports are up and running, literally, and doing great things. We have, let's see, we're doing walkthroughs. We had a walkthrough today. We have speech, speech team students going to state tomorrow. FFA students going to speak, going to state Friday. We have our robotics team going to Worlds. There's one more that I just heard about that we have to do something for. I can't remember. Oh, art, we have art, art students that qualified and are going to state-level things. So really awesome with that. Variety show is coming up, May 3rd and 4th. Our new choir director is doing a fantastic job. Then we have the second year, we've done this in an immersive career fair on May 14th, and we have partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, and we have lots of businesses bringing in interactive things for students to experience. And then commencement on June 2nd, which seems far away, but it's not. And so another thing I just note here, if you were wondering about personal finance, which you may be aware that that has become a requirement for graduation, starting in 2012, the current ninth graders? Yes. We have a plan that we're starting to work on and put together and pull people together and seeing, we're just gonna work through what needs to happen. The curriculum, we already offered that course as a one-trimester elective, and we'll keep it as a one-trimester course because it fits within what the requirements are at the state. They are gonna provide a framework for what should be covered, which should be pretty aligned to what we do, but we'll make sure that that's aligned. And our goal is, in this next year, kind of have that plan mapped out and bring it to the board and probably hopefully implement it even a year early, just because why not? I mean, it's an important course. We're thinking that it would be taken during their junior year. That way, we have another kind of buffer year for any student that doesn't make it through, and we can, yeah, get that ready to go. So that's all I got.
Any questions for Dr. Miller?
No, go ahead.
I had a question. You had the attendance ones. There was a percentage. What does that percentage mean? It's a percentage of, is that like how many days average student is there? Or average students in a...
Yes.
Let me think about this. Yeah.
So if it's 90%, I mean...
The attendance rate.
Yeah. The average student is there 90% of the days.
Yes. Got it. Yep.
And if you've seen some of the news articles from around, they discussed it last week at Albert Lee's board meeting. Attendance has been an issue in a lot of districts around here. And for us to maintain 90% plus even at our high school is a, is a good sign. That's positive.
Because there are moments that doesn't feel like it.
Is this like the excused attendance, the missing, or not excused?
I think it counts all...
It's all combined.
Yeah. Yeah. I, school-related absences, like if they're going for sports and stuff, that might not count within it. I'm not sure.
Correct. Yeah.
It would be interesting to know exactly how many are unexcused and how many are, you know, what is this 10% just see? Because, you know, if it's excused, you cannot do anything. If it's unexcused, I don't know, could you do something? I'm pretty sure you do something, right?
Yes, our school social worker and Justin Johnston, super, super, nope, Assistant Principal, that's kind of what they work with, and they work with the county. And our county actually does a pretty decent job with truancy. And so it gets to a certain point, we have letters, we have meetings, everything until we get to that point, and then, yeah, goes to get to court.
I was just gonna ask the enrollment. So obviously, you had a slight dip from last year to this year. Is that partly because we're graduating higher numbers of classes and bringing in, and then the next classes coming up doesn't have as large a numbers? Is that what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, our K6 right now is about between 100 and 110 on average class, and our high school still has those 130s, some of those classes. So over the next several years, we'll see some of those smaller classes come up. Yeah. And then we'll probably start to even out a bit more. That's the projection, right. And we'll find out when we have our study done here shortly. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? I have one. In yesterday's Star Tribune, there was an article back in the editorial area, and it said, or it's entitled Minnesota Principals Survey, Data Worth Having. And in there, it says that one of the questions that was asked, did you participate in that by chance?
I remember I've done several surveys. I probably did.
Okay. It, it says that the biggest challenge that most principals mentioned was student mental health. Would you agree with that?
100%. Yeah. I think, you know, mental health, it's come a long way as far as people not having as much stigma within their understanding of mental health. But I definitely think, you know, there's a lot of things that influence students' mental health. I think we're still seeing ripples from the pandemic and the isolation. Social media is huge, and how that has affected, I mean, even adults who didn't grow up with it. It's definitely something that we have to keep our eyes on. And we have a great team in the district, but I can speak specifically for, at my school, great team of professionals who we work well together, and we problem solve, and we outside resources and help. And having Fernbrook within our building, even though there's a huge waitlist always, it's still a huge benefit. Okay, so.
Can I ask a question kind of related to that? I mean, this, this is talked about in some districts, and then it's also at the legislature, a little bit, like cell phones and banning cell phones from, from students. Like, can you kind of explain what our cellphone policy is and how that's working?
Sure. So our cellphone policy is it's supposed to be out of sight. Couple years ago, we bought like little pocket things, numbered pockets for staff to, you know, have students. But then there's some teachers use that, some have them, you know, off, just as long as they don't hear it and it doesn't go off, you know, whatever. If a student, so teachers run their classroom, how they run their classroom, and when they get to the point where it's like, okay, I'm done, taking it to the office. The first time it comes to the office, the student can pick it up at the end of the day. If it gets bright and we keep track of it, the second time and every time after, a parent has to come pick it up. We don't give it to the student. That usually nips it in the bud really quick because most parents don't, I mean, obviously, that's kind of hard to do because the office is only open until 3:45, so, or 4:00. So it kind of helps.
Yeah, I only brought that up in relation to the mental health question.
Good question.
But, thank you, I appreciate it. Yeah.
Is there, if, if mental health is kind of a known issue and a struggle, what, I know that we have other, you know, we have doors open for dealing with them one-on-one. How do you address it as a large group? What are your, do you have any, any programs?
Sure. That's kind of what our connect is supposed, I mean, one of the avenues that we kind of use where, you know, each month, there's a theme, you know, focusing on kindness and gratefulness and different, you know, values like that. It's kind of, the hope is to kind of infuse some of that within there as well.
And some of the professional development that we've done of teachers too helps. How do you incorporate that in the content? Because the content is important too, but also addressing some of those needs within what they're doing instructionally. So effective way to do that. And you have your Courage Retreat that you do every, for eighth grades every year, so.
Yep. And juniors, then juniors are there as leaders for them. So it's kind of, there's a little bit there.
And how was the choir trip to New York?
It was exhausting. But it was so, it was really good. The kids were always, of course, great, but when you're not used to 16,000 steps a day, Jack out balked me all the time. But no, it was, it was great. It was a lot of fun.
Good. Leaving the high school at, what was it, 1:15?
1:15. That's what got me when, after we got back. I mean, we got back at like 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Monday, like every night for the rest of the week. I was just like, it was like, probably because I lost a day and I was asleep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank you. I think I'll move into my report now, and I'll start with my strategic plan update. I'm gonna start with the area of safe and welcoming schools plan update. I'm gonna start with the area of safe and welcoming schools because it kind of is gonna piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Miller was talking about, some things we're working on right now. You know, some of our mental health and suicide prevention activities have been, have been in place. You know, last spring, we had Maya Ascension come in and do a presentation for our junior high students as well as some bullying conversations happening there. And when you, Dr. Miller referenced the, my school's a safe place to be, that 54% was really concerning to us. And so we started digging into that and talking about what is, and some of that mental health is part of it. I don't feel like I can be who I am. I don't know if there's an adult that I can go to. I don't know if the door's gonna be unlocked when I get home. I don't like walking to school in the dark. All those things that started to come out of that, my school's a safe place to be. So the survey coming in, he didn't, he didn't mention it, is in much detail, but we've added some questions to that survey to help try to, and actually at the intermediate school, they do one-on-one interviews with the students for that process to kind of get to the bottom of that. Because as adults, you know, for me as superintendent, with safety being so paramount, I immediately go to physical safety and intruders or those sort of things. But that's not what a lot of our students are responding, that that's what they were commenting on in that particular, particular item. So, interesting to work through. We just learned, I just learned today at Rotary during the, during the noon hour, that May 16th will be a greenout. And so mental health support, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so we'll be working through that, supporting anybody that's struggling out there in that regard. Our attendance is also an indicator of, of student health and wellness and wanting to be in school. Students don't come to school every day, especially at the junior senior high, if they don't want to be there. There's lots of different ways to get around that. And yes, true in seeing those follow-through things happen, but it's a lot more work if they don't really want to be there. So that's a good sign. Other supports we have in place, youth mental health navigators is something that we have got implemented now in full, in full this year, our, our family service coordinators, of course. And now new this year, you've seen a couple of students at Wasika High receive a Grow Your Own Grant, to be a future educator. And Bree Lawrence, our, one of our counselors at the high school, is our navigator for that also. And, I mean, she took us students up to Duluth to look at some schools a few, a couple of weekends ago, I think. So really working hard and getting students feeling like they belong and they're part of our building. In the area of learning, Dr. Miller mentioned the grad rate, that continues to be a positive result. Though we have students graduating in four years, moving forward, and continuing if they're not, if they're not graduating, in four years. We know that some students, particularly the students that may attend the ALC or even our high school, four years might not be enough to get it done, but we want to get them done. That's the point, want to continue them. So I don't necessarily put all the eggs in the basket of four years. I look at, and are they continuing? And are we getting them to the finish line? Because we know, and all of you have been to those, some of those ALC graduations and commencement ceremonies, that's a life-changing event when you get done with high school. And many of us who work in education, we know that we can do school. And we've done school and we, I can get it. But for a lot of folks and students we serve, it's not something we take for granted to get to that finish line. And so the graduation rate still being 90% plus is a really positive thing. They didn't speak to it too greatly there, but seeing those reading scores in the 60s, that's, that's your expected proficiency potentially on some of our MCA assessments. So when we see those results this spring, we should see positive results. Last year, we were in the, right around 50 with our, with our overall reading proficiency. So I'm anticipating gains based on those numbers there. And then we're continuing to train our teachers in the READ Act and get that, the Science of Reading training. Brooke continues to do her 30-day feedback loops and we have well over 75 to 80% of our staff commenting every month that what they got for PD that month was relevant and they can use that in their classrooms. So that's positive. Negotiations are wrapping down. When you move to the Efficient Use of Resources part of our strategic plan, you're seeing as you approve, on for your approval consideration, that is our final bargaining group with the Principal Association, but then also starting to get through some of our individual contracts. And actually, we just, I had some conversations today with two other individuals. We potentially have those coming at the May meeting, maybe they didn't get on today's, but, so we're making some good progress there. Use of resources also space options and facility options. So we're looking in our community for what we can do with, with some space options. Something that I think is exciting is we're looking very realistically at potentially being able to add some childcare support here for this fall, for, for the younger infant and toddler ages, prioritizing our staff, but also for the community as well. Some of that hinges a little bit on space availability as we're looking at some spaces we could move around here in this building. But working with Jeff Jensen and the facility team here, there's maybe some spaces we could use, even if Felsworth Metro isn't somewhere else right away next August. So starting to look at that option there, to be able to provide that support for our, for our families, particularly our staff. We have, I can think of at least two teachers, just that I would know of, that was not, were on leave this year because they just couldn't find adequate childcare for their, for their family. And so we want to be able to support that as an option. Continue to work with the city on some recreational opportunities. We're finding there's some staff that are duplicating work between the rec department with the city, the parks department with the city, and then also us. So met with, actually just Nikki Benson and Carl Sonnenberg here recently, talking about how we can share some staff and not duplicate that work and be a cost savings to both parties. And then our new career pathways counselor at the high school, started here last month, were able to hire that position finally after, after a year of being empty because of our, if you recall, our teacher, our English teacher resigned in September there. So we had to move some staff around. So it left that counseling position open. Did have an individual who was moving to the area this spring and he's a licensed counselor and bilingual and just gonna be, I had a chance to visit with him today at Rotary and he's gonna be a great asset to our district and it's budgeted to maintain into the fall for that option. So lots of positive things happening right now around that strategic plan, getting to see some results here in the next few weeks.
Any, any questions for Eric?
So you said this counselor has started working already?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, well, we'll move on then to committee, board member reports. Adita, you would like to start us off, please?
I was a part of our policy committee where we went through the 400 series for the our policies and we will be approving the reviews today. And then it was superintendent evaluation committee and I will probably let you to talk about it, Dave, because you have the documents there. And I think that's all.
Julie?
I had facility committee where we talked about projects that are planned between now and 2030, looking at roofing warranties, talking about doing an enrollment study. Have we got, have we started that process yet?
During.
Okay. And then some other things. And we plan to give a more full report at our May workshop, kind of following up on some of what we talked about in December as far as facilities and stuff. So we'll be bringing more information then, so. Oh, and then I had the DAC committee, which some of this stuff was already talked about, with Jason's report about reviewing standards, talking about the personal finance class that will be required, starting with next year's incoming freshmen, and also the new science standards, which will get implemented next year, so.
Okay, Grant? I had about every committee. Personnel committee had met prior, just talking about next year's things and a few other things related to that. DAC committee, which you covered. Finance, we talked about enrollment numbers, budgets for next year. Nothing in particular for there. Professional Growth and Development Committee had another meeting with that and they continue to talk a lot about the training for the Amplify. I think I got my terms wrong, but the training that they're doing as well as.
Amplify, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, Amplify is the curriculum. You're thinking about letters and.
Letters and Core.
Core.
Yeah, the two different training paths that a lot of the teachers are going through. Those directly will be for the requirements that the READ Act will have. Not directly, but that's a lot, what's driving it. They also spent a lot of time talking about what they're gonna do for next year, which was very good to see and hear about. They're talking about partnerships and things they can do with that. So it's, they're doing a great job. I think that was all that I had.
Okay, I just wanted to mention on the superintendent evaluation committee, this is the, I guess we'd say it's the first draft or first working of a board member handbook that would be for current board members as well as new board members. And we spent a fair amount of time going through this and talking about some things. We went through it page by page and we're gonna keep working on it. And you said maybe for a fall?
The goal is for a fall rollout, yeah.
Fall rollout.
As the new election cycle comes into, into play here this fall.
Okay, okay. So, Darren?
Facilities covered, policy, insurance and safety we had. We just discussed insurance pricing, you know, possible options for future, safety of our buildings, nothing, nothing too crazy stuck out, but.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I was at the policy meeting or the insurance and safety meeting yesterday and it was nothing, nothing, nothing particularly new there. Everything is, you know, the dental budget's on budget, you know, so their, you know, their reserve is steady. So there was just some, a couple of small safety issues that, that were on and Jeff was there and he, he probably addressed them. So that looked, that looked good. And our policy, our policy that we got, there's nothing, nothing new on that. So I guess them the only two meetings that I've had here the last of months.
I've had a meeting every night, but you guys have covered pretty much everything every night this week anyhow. Community ed meeting was on Monday. Registration is open for summer session. There's some new offerings, especially in adult. There's some new adult offerings, which hopefully there, there's some registrations on those. And then summer's, Summer Jays Nest, first day of registration, it was pretty full and I believe it is now waitlisted. So I don't think that's uncommon, but it's being utilized, so.
Okay, got a email from Addie. Said she couldn't make it tonight. She was out of town and you would tell us everything that's going on at the high school.
So our spring sports have started and so that's really fun. And then, like Dr. Miller said, we have speech going to state and then robotics going to worlds and then our section spotlight on the arts award winners. So that was pretty fun. We had to walk through to Data and Connect where the band played for them. And then upcoming thing is the variety show, which is May 3rd and 4th. So I'm really excited for that one. That's coming up. And then our student council, just like spring projects, like putting out flags Memorial Day, so we're starting to plan things like that. So.
Okay, any questions for Colin? You want to start us off with the positive board feedback?
Yeah. The choir trip was really fun. And so I think that was really good. The chaperones did a great job. We didn't lose anyone. It was, it was a lot of fun.
How many students went?
I don't.
No idea?
Okay.
It was like 40-ish, about 45.
Quite a few. All on the same plane?
Yep.
Okay. I think everyone's, I don't think anyone lost luggage or anything. I think it all worked out, yeah.
Everyone made it out of the subway.
I appreciate that your bar is, we didn't lose anyone. So that's, that's good.
Was there a highlight for you out there?
I really liked going to Broadway. We got to see Six and Wicked on Broadway. So, yeah, that was definitely my favorite part.
Okay, good. Lissa?
Coming back this way?
Yeah.
Okay. I, so going to that preview for all of the elementary students, Megan really made me kind of push my schedule around so I could make it to Beauty and the Beast. And I'm glad I went when I did because Sunday then was a bust with the weather. But Colin did a great job. We were awesome. So that was fun to watch. The other thing I have, I have Mrs. Pop and she had posted quite a bit on her art students. I saw those posts come through. They are quite talented. And then the other thing I had, I know it's not Jump Rope for Heart anymore, but I cannot remember what it's called, but I know WIS has that going on right now. And it looks like they've already surpassed their goal. So, so, yeah.
Charlie?
Baseball. Baseball started this week. They changed the, they changed the schedule from Tuesday, was supposed to go on Tuesday, went on Monday because of the weather forecast, which was an excellent, which was an excellent plan. The afternoon was wonderful. The new, the new baseball stadium, I, first time I've ever been into that and I'm impressed with that. It's very, very nice, you know, good, good, good look at the field and all that stuff. And the boys did, the boys did well. They didn't win, but they, but they played, they played hard, you know. I can't imagine, I can't imagine a ball coming at me almost at 70, 80 miles an hour and trying to hit it. But that's what they do. That's what they do and they're good at it. So, and then the other things I did, a couple of times, or a couple of days, I spent a day out at, at WIS scooping up, or for, not scooping up, dishing up, dishing up food for the kids in the land. And I was really, 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 really taken back at how polite the kids are. You know, there was a lot of please and thank yous, you know. I was, I was, I was putting in carrots, you know, and so I had a lot of no thank yous, no thank yous, you know. And that was, that was fun to see that. And then I went to, I went to the high school one day and did the same thing there. And the job that our, that our cooking staff takes care of every day, you know, making sure that them 700, 800 kids, whatever, whatever's at that, the school, they have, have a, have a good choice, you know, and the work ethic of the, of the people working there. And also, I, you know, we talk about safety and then, and the resource officer was standing at the, at the door there and I went and talked to her a little bit, you know, and it was great. I felt, I felt totally comfortable there. I didn't see any issues at all that anyone should have. And of course, there was this good supervision of the, of the whole lunchroom, you know, where there wasn't any food fights going on or anything like that, you know. So I was, I was totally impressed with the, with the job that them, them folks do. So we need to just reach out and thank them every once in a while because of the job they do. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Thera.
Yeah, I'd like to say that Beauty and the Beast was awesome, but I, I fell asleep after our wrestling tournament. My family left me on the couch. So they said it was great. But no, it was, they all came home and said that it was great by everybody. So then about the only other thing I did, I did the kindergarten roundup or open house. Went through there. Everybody was very welcoming, showing the kids around and it's good to see everybody again.
Okay. I think you probably all know that it's getting a little harder all the time to find enough coaches for all the different sports that we, we do. And I just want to mention a couple of people here. We didn't have a, we weren't going to have a head golf coach this year for the golf team, right? And Ted Hammond, one more time, stepped up and said he would be the head coach so we could keep that program going. So want to thank Ted for that. And then I found out that our eighth grade baseball coach is Elizabeth Janiky. And to my knowledge, and I go back quite a ways, I can't remember a gal ever being one of our baseball coaches, but Elizabeth stepped up literally to the plate and she's the eighth grade baseball coach. So want to thank those two for going above and beyond and, and helping keep those sports going. So, Adita?
I would like to congratulate and good luck to Said Ashton, Lucas and Mason as they are heading up to the state speech tournament. And also congratulations to our section spotlight on, on the arts awards winner, Jia, and please forgive me if I misspell your names, Adele, Aidan, Hazel and Aria. Congratulations to both teams.
Good, thank you. Julie?
I noticed we didn't have any gifts and donations to approve tonight, which is unusual because we have a really generous community. But I did want to recognize our school PTOs because it's their spring funding, funding period. I don't know what Hartley and WIS granted this period, but the, the high school PTO approved almost 12,000 or almost $13,000 in grant requests at, at that building. So, but one of those, this is the community might be interested in. One of those requests is a joint request with the WIS PTO and we're creating a disc golf course out behind WIS, which will be used for FIED, but it can also be used by the community. So just kind of a fun, a fun grants request and it was a really fun one to approve, so.
Thank you. I think sometime if you've never done this, look up if you can, all the different things that are funded by the PTO and the Wasika Area Foundation. And just look at that extensive list that happens every year and without those two organizations, plus, plus others, I know. But just all the things, all the good things for kids, it wouldn't happen if we didn't have those organizations helping support. So, Grant?
Well, then unfortunate part about going last is all the other things. You should take in by the time I get the list, the only other one I would add is that I went to the Jazz Fest on last Saturday night, which every year I've gone, I've finished that and been like, why aren't more people come? There's a, they always have a professional musician come in there that does clinics with all the jazz, different jazz bands, as well as the Southern Minnesota Big Band comes in, which is a, really a professional class big band. So they, it's always a great show. The students also always perform with the people as well as themselves. So it's a great show. Unfortunately for those who missed it, go see it next year. It's, you won't be disappointed. There's a gate shot.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to action items. Item A, approve staff sharing agreements with Independent School District 2168, which is New Richland, Hartland, Ellendale, Geneva.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Just gonna look through this. Okay, it says these agreements are for the following positions: early childhood, special education, instructional coach, third-party billing specialist, behavior consultant, physical therapist, occupational therapist, special education administration. So we have a motion and a second to approve that staff sharing agreement. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Then we have to approve some resolutions to act on non-renewal of probationary teaching contracts. Do we do these one at a time?
It's one resolution with all the names. See, we need to read the resolution once. It's included in your packet.
Just read the resolution.
Yeah.
Oh, it's up there?
Just gonna start with the whereas. Whoever, whoever chooses to read the resolution.
Okay, whereas Carol Global, Samantha Ladd, Andrew Marcinic and John Pereira are teachers in Independent School District Number 829, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 829, that pursuant to Minnesota statutes 122A, point 40, subdivision five, the teaching contracts of Carol Global, Samantha Ladd. five, the teaching contracts of Carol Goble, Samantha Ladd, Andrew Marcinic and John Pareda, teachers in Independent School District number 829 are hereby terminated at the close of the current 2023-2024 school year. Be it further resolved, a written notice will be sent to said teacher regarding termination and non-renewal of their contract as provided by law.
I will second that resolution.
Do a roll call? Okay.
Grant Schuffer?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Theron Kruger?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Ellis Powers?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes. Okay. Good?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, approve individual 2023 to 2025 Wasika Public Schools contracts as presented and they are for Joe Hedivar, who is our activities director, Brittany Hurst, who is a certified occupational therapy assistant, Kristi Hutmeyer, school psychologist, and Rachel Clover, who's an occupational therapist.
A second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve 2023-2025 master agreement with Principals Association.
I'll make a motion to approve the master agreement with Principals Association.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the master agreement with the Principals Association. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve reviewed policies.
All motion to approve reviewed policies. Want me to read the numbers off, Dave?
Sure.
430, 457, Form 457, 499 and social media guidelines.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. A motion and a second to approve reviewed policies. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That would be the end of our action items. Upcoming items and reminders, May 2nd coming up pretty quick, School Board Work Session and May 16th would be our next regular School Board meeting. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Never.
Never. Whoops.